Anna Smith.
Here.
Sade Fashakun. Nikosie Nelson. Trish Bodie.
Here.
Paul Gauthier.
Here.
Gloria Gonzalez Delucchia.
Here.
Francesca Romans.
It is 6:17 PM and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. It is my pleasure to welcome Anya Desai, a student at Danielson Middle School, to lead us in the pledge tonight.
Please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
If you will join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Up next, we're excited to share our spotlight on learning with our Bearcats from Danielson Middle School. Whenever y'all are ready, take it away.
Alright, good evening. I am Erica Cruz, the principal at Danielson Middle School. At DMS, we are proud to create safe and innovative learning spaces where every student can explore their interests and pursue their passions. Whether it's through project-based learning, student-led initiatives, or hands-on collaboration, our Bearcats are encouraged to take risks, think creatively, and make real-world connections in their learning every day. We appreciate the district's support with this as we've partnered with Chris Clark, Dustin Benneker, and the CTE team to open up even more pathways for our students. One shining example of this innovation is found in our entrepreneurship class, where students don't just learn about business, they become business creators, problem solvers, and leaders. The classroom is a space where ideas come to life and students see firsthand the power of their creativity and teamwork. It's my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Jennifer Worley, our inspiring entrepreneurship teacher, along with four of her amazing students who will share their experiences of learning, designing, and growing through innovation at Danielson.
Thank you, Dr. Cruz. Good evening. I want to just add on to that, that what makes our class really special this year is that it is now offered as high school credit at the middle school. It gives these middle school students a chance to get a head start on their future pathways. By experiencing this level of learning early, students are more confident and prepared to become program completers when they get to high school. Our classroom students are encouraged to own their learning. They design, create, and market their own products while developing essential skills like problem-solving, collaboration, and leadership. Most importantly, they learn that innovation happens when you're not afraid to try, fail, and try again. Thank you for supporting our programs, and I'm going to hand it over to four of my amazing students now to tell you a little bit more about their experiences in our class.
Good evening. My name is Anya Desai. I'm in eighth grade, and this is my second year in Ms. Worley's entrepreneurship class. Today, I want to share with you some of the exciting projects I've been working on: embroidered bracelets and handmade greeting cards. Over here, I have some of the bracelets I've made. Each one is hand-knotted with a different variety of colors and patterns. And then, the three cards you see here, each of them are hand-drawn and hand-painted. Over here, I have a Halloween card. This one was hand-painted. This is a nice little celebration card, which includes floral patterns and one of my favorite fawns, calligraphy. And this is another watercolor card. This also involves some floral patterns. This class isn't just about making things. It's about learning how to start and run a small business. We've practiced pricing, marketing, and customer service. It's helped us build confidence and skills that will be useful in the future, and we are so grateful for what we've learned from such an inspiring teacher. Ms. Worley has always encouraged us to try our absolute best in everything we do and helped us believe in ourselves. She has taught me so much about the world of business and helped me get better and better at my creative skills every day. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sable. I made this tote bag out of a recycled t-shirt. This is my first year in entrepreneurship, and through this process, I learned how to recycle, reuse, and repurpose old materials. During this process, I also learned how to use a sewing machine, a cricket to cut vinyl, then a heat press to put my name as the design on my bag. This class teaches us to think about problems, how to solve them, and I can be creative and support sustainability. Thank you for supporting.
Hi, my name is Ethan Chong, and this is my second year of entrepreneurship, and I'd like to talk to you about 3D printing and using Tinkercad. So, this orange shark, it was made by a Drummel printer, which can only be printed in one color. But since I loved designing, and I really liked this class, so I took it again. And now, with our bamboo printer, we can now print two colors at once. As you can see, this LISD keychain, it's detailed, it's wonderful, and I like it. So, I also like to talk to you about this. This is a heat vinyl, what's it called? Compass. A compass. I think this represents the ISD logo, and that was made by a cricket. This class teaches about being creative, innovative, and problem-solving, and I'd just like to thank you, board members, and Ms. Worley for giving us that opportunity, and yeah, thank you.
Hello, my name is Sebastian Naris. This is my first year in entrepreneurship. I am an eighth grader. We just started a new project, which is our felt ghost is right here. It helped that Ms. Worley taught us how to sew handmade and with machine, which took a lot of progress, but I got it. This class is a safe space to experiment, learn from your mistakes. It teaches you about life skills that you can use collaborating with your classmates. Like, y'all have to collaborate to become a better LISD together, because not only one person can do it, everybody has to collaborate together. These felt ghosts, it's more of a student-led class, like Ms. Worley says. She's just here to help us, but we have to learn ourselves to do these things. Because our parents are always going to be here, so we're always going to have to learn ourselves, always learning by what you can do, what you can't do if you can't get help. There's things now, like the internet, that helps us, but before it was just all books. I'd like to thank y'all, board members, for giving us the experience. I am an athlete and a band member. Thank you for giving me, for example, I play an instrument called the trumpet, and I'm an athlete at track and basketball. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to do this.
So, thank you. The students are very grateful, so are we, just to showcase and highlight some of the incredible work that we're doing at Danielson, and it truly is about removing those barriers, providing pathways for every single student, and making this kind of learning accessible to all of them. So, thank you so much for your time.
Picture. Board members, we're going to get a picture.
And also, we did make you all one of the little bags with the LISD keychains the students did.
Thank you so much, Bearcats, for coming tonight and telling your story. We just love Danielson Middle School. And next, we will now move to the citizen comments portion of our agenda. Before I invite the first speaker to the microphone, we're going to watch a short introductory video.
Hello, my name is Kira Cox. I'm a junior at Cedar Park High School. The district and the Board of Trustees are the local government body responsible for serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren, like me and my friends here in the Leander Independent School District. Their mission is to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The Board is now taking up the citizen comment agenda item. This is dedicated time during this meeting to hear from the whole community, and the entire LISD family is listening. The district believes the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. To our speakers, before you speak, we hope you have read the guidelines specified in Board Operating Procedures and BED Local. The Board wants to hear from everyone. Please be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information. Remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in board meetings either by watching them online or you might even see some of us in the audience. Still remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email or just tell them that you would like to chat sometimes. When the Board President calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please, conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
Speakers one through nine, please form a line so you are ready to speak when your number is called. And speaker number one, whenever you're ready, go ahead and come up to the mic and begin your comments.
Good evening, board members and directors. My name is Kevin Wong, a junior attending Vandergriff High School, and I'm here today, having left my marching band rehearsal early, to speak on behalf of the students who are directly impacted by the decisions being made, especially surrounding the book bans, because we haven't been given a voice or any say in the matter. I appreciate the appealment of 36 out of 40 of the books that were recently banned, but information like this must be relayed to the student population, so we're up to date with the changes that are currently affecting us. These decisions are happening quickly, quietly, and without meaningful student input. That's a problem. When policies affect our education, our access to ideas, and our ability to engage critically with the world, students deserve to be a part of the conservation. We are not just passive recipients of these choices, we are the ones living with the consequences. There must be more transparency. Students should be informed, not after the decisions are made, but before. We should be given the opportunity to ask questions, share perspectives, and understand the reasoning behind these actions. Without that, trust erodes, and when trust erodes, so does the integrity of our learning environment. I urge the Board to consider more inclusive processes, ones that amplify student voice, not silence it. Let us be part of the dialogue. Let us shape the future we're being asked to inherit. Thank you for your time.
Speaker number two did not check in, so we will go with speaker number three.
Good evening. My name is Sherry Fulmer. I'm here from Cypress, not to be confused with Cypress Creek. On behalf of our community, I want to sincerely thank you for listening and exploring alternative solutions that don't rely on closing schools or reducing vital staff as the first option. We truly appreciate your efforts to find a balanced and sustainable path forward. Our community remains deeply engaged. Many of us are parents, coaches, and professionals who've been here, meeting after meeting, since May. We care deeply about this district, and we're doing our best to balance our commitment to our schools with the rest of our lives. Please don't take a smaller crowd tonight as a sign of waning interest. Many of our families, teachers, admin, and staff are watching the live stream from home, so thank you for that opportunity. Still, very much invested in these decisions. Please also don't take our ordering pizza at previous meetings as a sign of us making light of a very serious topic being discussed. Most of us don't get to have dinner with our families. We go home to change from our regular eight-to-five jobs, and we come here to join you on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We are doing the best we can with what we have. We believe in working together towards solutions that keep our schools strong, our teachers supported, and our community united. We look forward to tonight's presentation on the impact analysis and budget updates, and to continue this important conversation together. Thank you.
Speaker number four.
Thank you, board members, Dr. Gearing, and staff, for continuing to give us your time and to make Leander ISD a great community of students. Even though both of my kids have graduated from Leander High School, I am still invested in making sure that our community continues to grow. I was disappointed to hear that 40 books had been paused five years ago. I was here a lot, talking about how upsetting it was to have choices taken away from our students. I was very glad to see this week that 36 of those have finished being reviewed and are back on the shelves, and the other four will be returned to the classroom library and accessible, if I remember correct. But thank you for being diligent and listening and making sure that our students have access to information and that parents still have the choice to prevent their child from reading it, but that you're not allowing one group of parents to take books away from another. I understand that with SB 12, there's a lot of new rules, and y'all have a lot to juggle, but thank you for putting your time and energy into it and looking out for our students.
Speaker number five.
Good evening, and thank you all for your time. First, I want to sincerely thank the district for returning the books that had been removed from classroom libraries and book clubs. That decision means a lot to our teachers, our students, and families, and it shows a real commitment to literacy and giving our kids access to those diverse voices and ideas. Second, as the district works through any changes related to Senate Bill 12, I'm asking that if those changes require adjustments to what's been part of our curriculum to make sure our community knows that these shifts are because of SB 12, not because the district chose to do so independently. We need to be transparent and loud about the fact that SB 12 is driving these changes, so families understand where they're coming from. Transparency builds trust, and we already have a strong, established process for reviewing educational materials. I'd like to see that continue to be used wherever possible. Finally, I'd like to urge that any evaluation of books or educational materials for SB 12 not be done through artificial intelligence. AI is a very useful tool, but it reflects the biases in the data it's trained on. Decisions about what our students read and learn deserve the care and judgment of educators and curriculum professionals, not an algorithm. Thank you.
Speaker number six.
Hello. While I am grateful that you all are looking at alternatives to closing schools, the cancellation of tonight's vote is a double-edged sword. We are thankful for the time you have all spent organizing the workshops for alternative solutions. But school board members could still decide to close schools in 2026-27. At least, that's my understanding. Again, closing Cypress would be illogical and unacceptable. The parents' never-ending, well-founded, righteous indignation is exhausting as we advocate, again, for our cost-effective neighborhood school, instead of trying to help you find solutions. I am certain that the parents from other schools have a similar thought process. I actually would have an update to share this evening here about my contact with offices at the state level regarding future district funding. But as I previously stated, I can't waste my time and energy trying to help the whole of the school district get funding while you keep closing my neighborhood school on the table. It just doesn't make sense. It's too much work. Thank you.
Speaker number seven.
Hi, before I speak, can I ask real quickly, did the last four books get put back? Are they unpause? They're back in the classroom either, I think it's better, but not happening. Okay, I'm still writing. So, the state of Texas appears bent on legislating transgender individuals out of existence. And in its hurry to comply with this new law, LISD evidently agrees that everyone's story shouldn't have meaning and importance, and not only shouldn't be shared, but shouldn't be studied. Administration also throws a bone to the races by pausing stamped, and I'm surely not the only one who must wonder why. I don't know if our leaders understand that. By agreeing with the bullies that our legislators have become, they undermine and disrespect the knowledge and creativity of their teachers, in some ways affirming conspiracy theorists that staff members are groomers and perverts intent on indoctrinating students. As far as I know, parents have always had the right to ask for alternative reading assignments if they disagreed with a book for any reason. Book clubs can offer choice from a variety of titles without fear of denying any parent's rights to control their child's education. As a former teacher, I taught my students the meaning of integrity, that one should do the right thing even when no one is looking, but one also has to do the right thing when everyone is looking. And it's time to stand up to the bullies. There is no safety in obeying. Bullies continue to take as long as they are not challenged. If all of our institutions, like media, law firms, public schools to universities, bow to the bullies, how will the people unite to save us from those who preach anger, hate, and fear?
Speaker number eight.
Good evening, board members. My name is Dr. Angela Schreiber. I'm a parent of two LISD secondary students and a professional educator with a master's degree in curriculum instruction and a doctorate in educational leadership. I currently create language arts curriculum materials and resources and assessments for districts across the state. I'm here to encourage you to follow the district's established process and policy rather than being reactive. High-quality book clubs matter. They prepare students for career and college-level reading, writing, and discourse, and these skills, students don't suddenly develop when they are in the college or workplace. They need practice now, in the classroom, with teacher guidance. I've heard some people say we should let kids be kids to justify removing books, but being a kid means being curious, asking hard questions, and making sense of a complex world. Quality literature will help them do that in a safe and guided environment. When we remove books, we're not protecting childhood, we're limiting intellectual growth. The current process provides parents with a wealth of information to guide their own children's book club selections. Removing books from the list takes away opportunities for parents to be more involved in their students' literacy. The local policy clearly states, "No challenged instructional material shall be removed solely because of the ideas expressed therein." Follow this policy. Don't remove books preemptively based on political pressure. Our schools exist to educate, not shelter students from ideas. Thank you.
Speaker number nine.
Good evening. Last week, administration communicated to leaders across campuses that there would be no school closures in the 26-27 school year. This information was shared with Cypress faculty, which in turn meant the news made its way to our broader community. Shortly after that message was shared, our campus leadership was asked to retract the announcement and clarify that the Board had not yet confirmed that decision. This felt like emotional whiplash and left us to spin stories in our minds about why the district would make such a definitive statement without being certain it could uphold that commitment. We are asking the Board for procedural clarity related to long-range planning and decision-making. Based on everything we've heard, it seems apparent the Board is still a long way off from being able to make informed and defensible decisions about school closures. Knowing closures are off the table for next year would not tie the Board's hands indefinitely, but it would help reduce our community's acute anxiety and allow for more constructive engagement. Yet, the Board refuses to say that, and we're confused why. If the Board wants to keep closures on the table for next school year, we would also appreciate clear, coordinated communication on that as well, along with a drop-dead date for that decision and other details about what to expect from this new process. Thank you.
And that concludes our citizen comments for tonight, and now we will move to consent agenda. Board members, do you have any motions related to consent agenda items?
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
I have a motion from Trisha, a second from Sade. All in favor? Six ayes, motion passes. And next, we're going to head to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. We're going to try to do a little bit of celebrating here tonight as we go through. We did have an event this week called Pathways and Possibilities, and this was a celebration of the partnerships that we have with our community. And so, we're going to share some of that, but also some other celebrations as we go. So, one of the things we talked things we talked to our community about at this event was the fact that we do produce some of the best fine arts education in the state, and we can say the best with definitive authority because of the results that we get from all six of our comprehensive high schools, certainly in the marching band arena. And so, we talked a little bit about that. But that was on display, too, a week ago or so at the Festival of Bands, where all six of our bands performed for our community. And not only the marching band and the musical instruments, but also our color guards and dance teams that perform with our bands were on display for our entire community to enjoy. So, Pathways and Possibilities was an event that helped us to highlight some of the partnerships that we have in our community and to encourage our community to engage with us in more effective partnerships as we go forward. And we wanted to showcase for them some of the amazing things that our students are doing as a result of the partnerships that we have with our community. So, a little more than a year ago, A.J. Giuliani was in our convocation conversation, and so, we talked a little bit to them about what this quote means that we keep repeating over and over again. One of the exciting partnerships that we have is with the City of Cedar Park Public Works, and we have an apprenticeship program that we've developed with them. They came to us with a need for employees for their public works department. It's not every student that thinks about public works as a future for themselves, and so, we wanted to make sure that we were educating our students and encourage them to take part in this possibility. And so, in the first year, which was last year, three of our students participated in a year-long internship, apprenticeship with the City of Cedar Park Public Works. And all three of those students came out with certifications in the areas that they worked in and were offered employment at the City of Cedar Park. All three of them accepted that employment initially, and then two of them actually found better jobs, and so, eventually didn't end up at Cedar Park. But we did get the opportunity to have a conversation at Pathways and Possibilities with Tyler de Los Santos, who is still working with the City of Cedar Park. And he shared a little bit of his experience as an apprentice, as a senior in high school, and now as a full-time employee with the City of Cedar Park, fully certified and earning much better than he would have if he had had to come out of high school and start at the bottom without his certification. And so, this is the kind of partnership that is really beneficial to both the school district and our students, but also, of course, to the community partner who's working with us, in this case, the City of Cedar Park. This is continuing this year. We have doubled the number of students who are involved in those apprenticeships. So, we have six students right now working in these apprenticeships in public works, and they've also expanded that to fleet vehicle management at the city. We also had the delight of speaking with Christian at the event, and Christian is one of our students who has graduated out of our transition services program, where he was part of the Leander Lasers Athletics, but also one of our work programs with HEB Plus. And so, Christian now works full-time, well, he works 15 hours a week for HEB Plus, which for him is as full-time as he's able, and does a fantastic job. They really appreciate the work that he does, and he is getting to learn new skills that help him with his independent living. It was also fascinating to hear him talk about his experience with the Austin FC team that he plays on. They get to meet a lot of those Austin FC players and also interact in that environment. And so, he did a fantastic job in front of a lot of our community at the Pathways and Possibilities event, along with his job coach from our Denise Geiger Compass Center, who did an excellent job of supporting him. We also had the privilege of talking to Jade a little bit, who graduated from Leander ISD this last year, from Rouse High School's automotive program, and is now working full-time for Hyundai Leander in the parts department. And again, she had no idea that that was even a possibility for her. She really thought she was going to have to get, end up on the technical side, and she didn't want to do that. And so, she was really debating what she was going to do with her life until we had an event that brought the Hyundai Penske team together with the Rouse Automotive team, and they got to tour the facility, and they got introduced to Jade. And at that time, they were so impressed that they offered her an interview, and she interviewed and wowed them so much that they actually held her position until she turned 18 and could actually legally go and work for them. And then, it was fascinating because in the Pathways and Possibilities event, we had three adults and Jade, and she was the one who actually carried the conversation, which was really impressive to see her confidence and her ability to entertain in front of such a large number of people. We also had the privilege of talking with Threshed, and Threshed is a Leander High School grad from the class of 2024. He is now at UT Austin and studying electrical and computer engineering as well as business. And he had an internship with the Leander Chamber this summer, and as part of that internship, he created an app for the Leander Chamber, and you can see on the right side of the screen there, part of his app. And Bridget Brandt just had nothing but incredible things to say about Threshed and the incredible work that he did with the team this summer at the Leander Chamber, and the incredible opportunity that he had to demonstrate his skills and abilities, and also to really give a lot of, he added a lot of value to the Leander Chamber during that internship. And so, we had a really great event at Pathways and Possibilities. We'd like to celebrate our staff a little bit, and so, this week is Campus Technologist Appreciation Week. Actually, that was September 22 through 26, but we wanted to make sure that we recognize some of our folks. And so, this is Robin Parker. She supports Steiner Ranch Elementary, River Ridge, and Canyon Ridge Middle School. And I love this quote. I like being able to interact with the staff and students at the different campuses, and being a campus tech allows me to do that. That is part of the reorganization that we did with how they operate now, serving more than one campus. We also had Custodial Appreciation Week, and this is Rolando Martinez from Four Points Middle School. And what I enjoy most about my job is keeping the school clean for our students. A clean environment is beneficial for their learning. So, when we talk about safe and innovative environments, it's something that our staff takes incredibly seriously. And we also have our Instructional Coaches Appreciation Week, and this is Angie Motel at Black House Creek Elementary School. And without a best, without a doubt, the best part of being an instructional coach is getting to support, celebrate, and encourage, and collaborate with our incredible teachers. And so, we really appreciate all of our instructional coaches, our custodians, and instructional technologists who help to make sure that our students and our staff have everything that they need. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
First, I just want to say, great job, Bruce. I know you care, and these kids' performance has a great reflection of how much you care. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Any other questions, board members, or comments? All right. Thanks, Dr. Gearing. All right, board members, next, we're going to move to 7A1, Discussion of the Strategic Levers and Impact Analysis Framework. We're going to let Jeremy take the lead on this. Board members, I ask that you let him get through the presentation first, and then we can start digging into what we're looking for. So, hold your questions, drop them down, and Jeremy, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Gearing. And so, just like we mentioned, I'm going to run through a strategy here, getting through a framework. And this framework may look new to a lot of you, but what we're trying to accomplish tonight is to look at a framework as a visual tool when we look at future levers, budget levers that we may have to consider, and how does that just impact our entire educational environment within Leander ISD. So, it's a new tool. Where this tool came from was from a conversation, and a lot of conversations we've had actually in this room, and trying to understand, we have to make big decisions, and we have levers that we may have to pull and may have to consider, but how does that impact, what are those commitments, and how we impact those commitments will tell us maybe what other considerations we may need to bring to the table. This is more information for you, for the district administration, to consider. So, I'm going to run through this, but the ultimate goal tonight is to, I'm going to go through this tool so we understand how the framework functions, but we really need to focus on commitments, because the commitments that we compare those levers to will really help provide clarity in when we bring you this information later on in the process this fall through budget. So, looking at the strategic levers and impact analysis, we've talked about the budget deficit that we have to navigate for next school year. We know tough decisions are to be made, but the levers that are, we're going to consider as a district, there's revenue levers. We've talked about potential disaster pennies, a potential evader. We've talked about land sales and potential land leases and what that could do to bring in revenue. And so, that's where these two component levers could be considered. But then, we also have potential reductions, which would help mitigate that budget deficit that we do have. I will tell you, this is not a complete list of all levers. Levers are still being developed as of today, and will continue to be developed as we navigate the fall. You see, we've already said that we're going to lead from central office when it comes to reductions. We look at student programs very, very closely, and also just other efficiencies from staffing and master schedule. But again, this is not a comprehensive list. This is just some of the ideas. We're going to have revenue levers. We're going to have some potential reductions. And then, other considerations, we know how important our staff are. We always want to take care of our staff, but in order to do so, that goes above and beyond what we've been presenting so far. And so, anything above 0%, that is an added cost to the budget, but those will be levers that we have to consider as a district moving forward as we set the budget for next year. So, here is just a draft overview of what this framework looks like. It's a lot, and I don't expect you to understand exactly everything that you're looking at right here. But what we are doing is we're identifying those commitments that you'll see at the top. There's four right now. These are just draft ideas of potential commitments. And then, we compare the paths and the levers against those commitments, and what we ask is, what happens if we move forward with these levers? What happens if we don't move forward with those? And we build a combination between paths and levers that address the budget deficit sustainably. So, how we read the framework, we have a couple of different categories. We have our paths. I'll let you know that when this framework was developed, we were still in those conversations, right, about path one, path two, path three, also knowing that we have our levers, which are tied to budget actions. And then, we have our impact columns. We'll have costs associated with that when we come back, and then first and second-order impacts and worst-case scenarios. So, let me start by doing this in order, okay? So, the paths did represent, they continue to represent that, the long-term strategies for addressing low-enrolled elementary schools. But tonight, we're really going to focus on how levers are involved in this framework. So, the specific action levers that we could take as a district to mitigate the budget deficit. And then, that's when the commitments come into place. That number three, basically, it's what matters most to the board when considering strategic decisions around budget levers. And we want to make sure we focus on these because that's really going to help administration as we navigate levers and try to explain what those impacts are. So, you look at four, that's the impact. The lever rated against those commitments that the board provides, that's a way that we can look at, is that a positive impact to the commitment? Is it a neutral impact, or is it a negative impact to those commitments? So, if we take student experience, if student experience is a commitment, what is staffing and master schedule efficiencies? How does that affect the student experience? Is that a positive impact? Could it be negative? Or is it kind of a neutral? It doesn't necessarily impact that. We go through each one of those commitments comparing the levers. And then, we go to first-order impact, like what happens right away? Because a lot of times, you'll see what, that the impact may be a positive impact, but understanding the second-order impact, what happens after that, kind of downrange, and we need to understand that as well. We know, we may identify what that immediate is, but what's the secondary impact, where it may affect enrollment, program outcomes, and equity impacts, et cetera. So, every time, we want to make sure that we compare our levers against our commitments and then identify those impacts when we come back to you. And then, lastly, we just look at worst-case scenarios, which is the risk of action versus inaction, making it clear that not acting has costs and consequences as well. So, typically, when we make strategic decisions, we want to make decisions in which the risk of moving forward is less than the risk of not moving forward, if you understand what I'm trying to say. We have to look at both of them. If we move forward, but also if we don't move forward, there's risks involved with both of those. So, this is kind of the framework that would be filled out by administration as we consider these levers. So, when we come back to you later this fall, all of a sudden, we're going to have more information for you to consider when we bring those levers to you, and you can identify the impacts. But really, what we want to do is identify and confirm commitments as a board that we can utilize within this framework. And then, administration will refine the framework and model those potential impacts of the budget levers as part of our budget process that we'll continue to bring forward to you in the fall. So, these are the four commitments, but these aren't locked in, okay? I'll tell you from, like, can we have 20 commitments? No, around four to six is really where you want to land. Between four and six would be efficient for administration to navigate in order to be effective when we bring that back to you. What's also important is when we come up with terms like student experience and stewardship, sustainability, identity, that could mean a couple of different things to people. And so, operational definitions are going to be really important. A lot of times, we may want to tie, say, enrollment into the impact, the commitment. Well, that may not be the phrase you want to use, but it could be tied in with the operational definition, so then, administration can make sure that we look through the entire commitment all the way through the definition as we analyze these levers. So, what I want, you can see that that was pretty quick. We're already to the discussion section. But we're going to spend some time right here in this space to look at those commitments and make sure that when we leave here, that we can have an agreed-upon list of those commitments and an operational definition. And I will tell you, this is really going to assist administration as we navigate these levers moving forward.
Thank you so much, Jeremy. All right, board members, you heard Jeremy tonight. These are the commitments that we're going to work on that are going to help guide our decision with the district's financial stability and address all of the other problems we have: high and gross schools, low enrollment, decline enrollment. So, with that said, I don't get in the weeds tonight, because I'll pull you right out of it. I need y'all to focus on the commitments and really lean into that. Sarah, if you don't mind being our person, using our continuous improvement tools and pulling out those big topics and just helping us as we go. And we're going to share the mic tonight. We're going to do that. All right, Shawde, kick it off.
I probably know where I'm going. So, on the revenue side, when we talk about levers, I mean, our major source of revenue has to do with our attendance for enrollment. And so, I, immediately I saw that, I was like, well, we need to have a commitment to increasing our attendance. We talked about open enrollment as far as like, help, trying to help the enrollment. Yes, it might not help for one year, but compounded over time. So, I think that we still shouldn't lose sight of those.
You got it, Bruce.
So, I agree. I'm going to drag us right back again immediately because we're, that's a conversation around levers, which we're going to have at some point in time, but I don't think we're going to have that conversation until we've really understood what are we going to compare that to. So, we want to make sure that we jump into these commitments and make sure that we have a very clear understanding of, are these the four commitments? Are there a couple more? Is there anyone here that we want to take out? And then, on top of that, I think, Jeremy, you want us to really make sure that we have a good operational definition of what that commitment is, and that we've put it down and write and talked about it so that we walk out of here saying, when we start talking about those levers at future meetings, which is going to come, and we jump into them, then this is what we're referencing them against. Does that make sense?
So, Jeremy, I'm going to be looking for head nods here, because then I'll go to my question, because I called you earlier, and I'm like, okay, there's a lot here. And I'm like, oh, there's so many places. I told you, we could go off-roading on conversations here. And so, And so, scope. The scope is that although I may have questions about how are we gonna address under enrollment and, and, and over enrollment, we've gotta address those. Shadé has questions about attendance, so there's all these different things that are there. This tool, could you be used for all of those at a later time? You're asking for us tonight to design what are, I'm just asking, make sure, what are the commitments that later, as these conversations come up one at a time, we'll be talking through them through this lens? And so this gives the administration permission, I guess, in a way, and confidence to go back and start designing these tools. The first one you're gonna bring back, though, is gonna be on the budget deficit. We're gonna talk about the budget for one year. But I, I told you, and I said, well, wait, what about the future? And you're like, yeah, that's gonna be another conversation. What about enrollment, that's another conver-. So these are gonna roll out, but you need the commitment discussions.
Absolutely.
And so with looking at that, like, so if these are gonna be our framed of reference, then I will ask you one of the questions, I already teased it up, so you know it was coming. How do I understand better something like the commitment of sustainability? Because I feel like it could almost be at odds with each other. Like, I think it's sustainable to, I don't know. Anna didn't do her caveat of like, please give us grace as we have all these conversations so we can say things, but she can do that again in a bit. But, you know, what if it's like, you know, we're going to cut X? Well, then what happened to Y, right? Like, is that sustainable? Be able to cut Y, what happens to X? Like, you know what I'm saying, like, you could almost, it almost seems like sustainability is just whoever wants to argue a point. So can you help me understand better how we should operationalize sustainability? Or what questions you need from us as you get ready to go develop this framework?
Yeah, I think when we look at commitments, it's, it's really, what risk are we at? Right? So when we talk about budget, what is at risk? It's the sustainability of programs, the sustainability of the district in general from an operating standpoint. And so that's why the operational definitions do, do come in play. Because like you said, you can interpret sustainability a, a couple of different ways. And so what is really, what matters most when we're considering it? And from a sustainability standpoint, I think we're trying to maintain the, the superior education that we provide within this district. And we have to have funding in order to do so, right? But I would definitely wanna leave it up to the space here to define that. From a trustee standpoint, what does it mean to you? I can give you my perspective, but I know you may have other things you wanna consider when it even comes to the term sustainability.
I'm just thinking out loud, so I, I, I wonder if we must not fall into the trap of trying to get too far ahead of ourselves. So sustainability becomes tricky from your example when you try to think about it in terms of overall sustainability. But in this case, the tool's gonna be used to analyze one lever at a time. And, and that's different, right? So if I go to Shadé's example of attendance, ADA, and I run that through the lens of sustainability, I have to keep increasing ADA as much as possible in order to be sustained, sustainable over time. So that one works, right? Now, if I think about ADA versus student experience, the more my kids are here, the, the better student experience can be. So if we think about it one at a time, I think it makes it easier for us to go forward. If we start to get up, because after that, once we've ranked all of these things on sustainability, then we can look at all of them together in sustainability and say, what are the interactions now between them and what's the overall impact? And we can measure them against each other. But just this definition needs to, I think, rest on one thing.
So all of that helps, because the first thing I did when I, when you showed this, I was like, there's levers that are missing, right? And so, yes, I did the same thing. I was like, wait, open enrollment, wait, you know, all the things. And so we're really talking about these commitments and operational definitions around them to kinda guide the process. I've been thinking about this ever since this was uploaded. And I feel like almost every piece that pops into my head when I think about open enrollment, when I think about consolidation, you know, all of those things, I can see where it fits when, you know, even thinking about programs and, and thinking about master schedule. And, and so I try to play out some of the levers with this. I will tell you, the one that I kept getting stuck with was the history, identity. I, I don't, I don't like it. I don't see how it, it, I feel like our identity and history is our student experience. And, and that should be guiding, like, we, we want to enhance and provide, like, the best possible student learning opportunity and, and all these opportunities for our students. At the same time, we have to be good stewards of dollars. I feel like history, like, well, we didn't do open enrollment before, why are you putting, that's not part of the history. We didn't do this type of scheduling before, that's not part of the history. And so I feel like it's almost at odds with some of the levers. I know it says it's evolving, but I think, I think that one's just gonna be sticky. I foresee it being problematic. I want us to think about our students' experience. And, and I know the reality of student experience, we also have to think about that stewardship and sustainability, right? Because we wanna provide all the programs and all the places, but there is a budget. There is a deficit that we're trying to manage through. And, and so I, I don't like that fourth one. I think that that one is going to make conversations and future discussions stickier, but that's just my opinion.
I agree with that, because I actually looked at it from a facility standpoint. Like, you know, my kids went to an elementary that is two years old. Where's the history in that? There's a ever-changing, you know, schools being built in the north, there's just not that legacy per se. And so when I look at this commitment, and I'm thinking about the levers that could be used, because we're using this framework to impact the entire district, I need it to be relative to all schools, not just schools that have been here for twenty, thirty years. I mean, it, that's not going to help us address the situation that some of these newer built schools. I would honestly like to see that completely removed.
I, I had an issue with looking back. So with the history, yes, you kind of have, somewhat have it at the back of your mind, but there's a lot looking forward, the changing landscape. There was a time that public schools were the only game in town. And so there were no charter schools, hardly any private schools. Now we have vouchers. So that landscape, I think, being forward-looking is something that we need to try and capture more than being backward-looking.
Yeah, so, yeah, my immediate reaction, so student experience. So student learning, I think is a part of student experience. I think I could imagine a scenario where we can break those things out. Experience being, right, the experience, but learning being the performance and, and so, so I think, I think through that. I think stewardship makes sense, sustainability. The history, identity, I, I love the points that Glory and, and Anna made. I think maybe the identity part is maybe something interesting. What I see is maybe to think about like who we are as a district. Because if you take these other items, any school district might, you know, could speak to student experience, stewardship, sustainability. That is the part that might be unique to Atlanta, uh, to Atlanta, to, to LISD, I don't know why I say that, that was weird. Like, where did that come in? Yeah, where did that go with? I don't know where that went. I don't like, I really don't know where that came from, like. Anyways, but, but really unique to our, to our school district. And so I wonder if like, if that means our commitment to community schools? Like, if that's something that, that, like, that's the identity we wanna, you know, put a stake in, right? So I, I just, I'm interested to explore the identity part in terms of like, maybe, like, if, if we think of just past decisions that we made of like who we are. And so, I'd, I'd like to explore.
I could get behind that, like, tying it into, you know, the LISD framework and our guiding documents. I don't wanna get into the specifics of community schools, because I think about elementary rezone thirty, and we had one particular neighborhood that's like, build me a school right now. And we just can't build schools for every neighborhood, I wish we could. So I, I like that, I feel like if we could lean into, I don't know if history or identity is the correct word, but leaning into those documents that this board has and, you know, what is the LISD learning profile? Like, how did, that graduate profile, like, how do we lean into those documents as we're making those decisions?
Can't we lean into those, into the experience, stewardship, and sustainability, though? I feel like there's elements, I just, I think the, and I'm not, I'm like, if we decide there's four, if we decide there's five, I just think this is gonna be a big, messy process. And the more items we add, I, I just think it should be cleaner. And I'm just wondering, I kinda wanna get the documents in front of me now, because I, I love that idea of putting the, you know, our graduate portfolio, or maybe it's parts of the, the Leander Way. Thinking of, are there elements that fall into experience that really, you know, include all, some of those elements? And same when we talk about sustainability and stewardship, being able to insert those elements into, into that piece.
I love that, because I mean, those are the documents we lean into as a board member when we're making these decisions. Paul, go ahead.
Is the sustainability one, is that the one that's gonna provide like the, the dollar value? Or is there one that is gonna have a dollar value?
I mean, I think they all will, right? Right now, like, when we get to the levers, that's when you're gonna start seeing that impact of, you know, what we're saving or what we could save. But right, this right now is just a general overview, so like, you know, for instance, like student experience, right? Like, when we start talking about that, like, you know, like, I'm just going down a road, like, if we cut programs.
Some of it just has a transient value, it has no number that we can actually put on it.
No, not right now, not right now, we're gonna get into the weeds later, about, not tonight, but at another board meeting.
Yeah, I guess, what happens is, one of the way, the ways that we talk about utilizing this tool is if you go straight to the dollar on those levers, it can influence your decision. And so you do the analysis on impacts first, and then you can, then you start looking at dollar figures and cost savings associated with those. So that's one technique as we go fill this out and, and review it.
So I agree with everything that's been said so far about, you know, does identity really get out of it? I like the unique to LISD. I did pull up quickly our guiding documents, which is the graduate profile, the ten ethical principles, the learning model, and the Leander Way, something for the board to think about. I do wonder too, like, I, I would like to go back and explore Nicosi's statement. And really, you can't really figure this all out before you get here. You kinda need board conversation and maybe administrative help to think about this. But student experience, that could be extracurriculars, and I think that's important. I think to think about extracurriculars, how long were they on a bus? How, how, how was the classroom experience if it's over-enrolled, how is that, right? Those are experiences like in the, in the place, so there's certain intangibles there, but I think they're important to consider. I think that is different, though, than student academics. Like, the curriculum is so important, and we have so many, and the board is aware of this, legislative external levers pressing on that academic portion. And I feel like trying to mask it in all to student experience may make it kind of convoluted. It might make the lens actually harder by mashing it. Maybe it might be easier to separate somehow, but I don't know how yet. I just wanted to throw that out there, because Nicosi, I liked your idea. Maybe you can think about it and see if you can think of a different way. Or Jeremy as well.
I read that one, student experience, and I, I think the academics and extracurriculars and all those, I, I think that they are part of this student experience. And I was looking through our guiding documents as, as we were talking through, and the first one in our core beliefs is a focus on students and all the elements that impact their overall student experience in order for them to reach their maximum potential. And so right there, we are talking about student experience, and we're talking about all of the elements that impact their overall student experience. That is academics, that is how long you're on the bus. Those are, you know, the extracurriculars that you're in. And so I, I think, you know, I like that part of bringing in some of these documents that have been with us. And, and really, they're already aligned to that, you know, when we look at this core belief. But I think, I think there can be some more pulling it out in terms of that student experience. But I think the student experience is all of those pieces together to make the student experience, you know, what Leander is.
So just wanna jump in on process here for a second, because I think it's really important that we're keeping in mind two things. Number one, we're looking at the commitments and deciding, are they coming in or going out? And then, or are there others that we wanna add, right? But then I also want you to think very much about the operational definition here. So there's an opportunity, just because it's up there, we just put something up there to start the conversation, but this is definitely not the end goal. So by the end of tonight, though, we really do want a firm understanding of what the operational definition is. So I don't want you to shy away from saying, this one comes out altogether, or this one is good, it may need to get split into two, or it may just need to get defined differently with more words or less words. Or I, I just don't want you to be afraid to make suggestions like that, and we'll start to move towards trying to finalize the.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a first suggestion, because it's not on this list. Something I keep thinking about, right? When we start talking about budget cuts, right? And, you know, surplus, we think about our staff, like I did my research. One thing I'd like to see on here is staff experience and growth. Because, think about it, we need teacher stability more than ever right now. The last thing we need to be doing is overloading them with work. I mean, we already hear from our secondary how filled those core classes are right now. And I can't imagine what it's gonna be like in two to three years if we keep kicking the can down the road. And so I really like to see something with staff experience and growth, because we are a PLC district. We, we encourage our staff members to grow, but how are we gonna help them grow? When we're overloading them with more work, we're telling them to do more with less. And so to me, that's a huge piece of this puzzle, because that also plays into the student experience.
Can you expand a little bit on the growth piece and what you mean by that exactly?
More, you know how we have our leader, what is that, Leaders Academy? We do the principal, inspiring principal academy stuff, giving them opportunities to grow as an educator and not be just stuck in the classroom, because we have to get rid of those programs, because we're looking at ways to cut. So, I mean, you know, growing professionally, and we do a great job at that. I just don't wanna see us starting to chip at that, because then that will impact the student experience. And then also, this ties into staffing models, right? And that, you know, how is it equitable across for low and higher enrolled campuses? Now I'm getting into the weeds of what the staff experience growth like, you know? Just being, you know, transparent about, you know, which y'all have been. I'm, I'm very appreciated that HR and finance has been going in and meeting with our staff members and getting feedback from our principals. This is a stuff like, y'all know, when we came here last budget season, that was the first thing we asked, so what did the principals say? And so it's just, for me, it's another little commitment as we go into these levers, which I know y'all are doing, but it's just also gives us that extra kind of a, gives y'all the guidance, but also kinda lets us know that you're checking that box.
Yeah, I, I like, I like adding staff here in some way. I wonder, Anna, if, if like staff experience, then growth can be a part of the definition.
I love that, no, that's perfect, I love that.
One thing that's not on here, and, and maybe it's just part of the definition, but we've often talked about like consistency around the district, we've used the term equity. And so I don't see equity up here. I don't know if it should be or not, but I, I don't see that as, as like, it doesn't jump out. And, and it's something that I know we've called out as like important to us.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna push you a little bit, because I wanna make sure that I understand. So equity to me is very different from consistency. And so I want to clarify, are you saying both and, or are you saying one or the other?
Sometimes with inconsistency, it impacts equity. And so that's what I'm getting to, where the student experience is different, because at some place, it may be implemented very different than another place. The student experience is different, and then it's an inequitable experience for that student.
That, I feel like that's student experience, right? But let me take it a step further, right? What about access? That is one of our strategic plan pinpoints, right? And access affects every student, but would that be student experience, right? Because it's its own separate thing, so.
But, but to, to that point, does access need to get added in the definition and the student experience? To make sure that it doesn't get lost?
I, I would like that, only because if we're talking about this framework, right? And what the impact it's going to have, the last thing we want to do is prevent access to programs to students, which, that's, we don't want that.
Cuz I'm back to process again, so Jeremy, help me here. It feels like we're, we're brainstorming and everybody has an idea. Do you wanna continue to do that for a little bit and get all the ideas out? At some point, I would like to narrow it down to one thing at a time, and then make a decision about that thing and get some clarity around that thing. Because otherwise, it feels like we're, we're starting to write down things and we're going, hold on a second.
So, why don't we start from student experience, and we'll go down, and if you, um, we'll, we're just gonna do this popcorn thing. And then, if we want to add on, like we had the staff, what was it? I can't remember, staff experience? If you want, see other things you wanna add on, we'll do it after we're done. I guess we already talked about history identities, so after sustainability, if there's ones that you feel very passionate about or wanna talk about, let's do that, so. Who wants, what, student experience, we'll start there. So Gloria, you wanna kick us off?
Um, yeah, I, I would like to be able to pull in some of the language from our core belief. Um, around that student experience, and that being that the student experience, you know, a focus on, and, and I need to play around with the words too, and I'm sure, I was thinking almost of the format we did last time. Where we give some things, give time, you know, if that makes sense, right, to, to do that. But really, focus on the students and all the elements that impact their overall student experience in order for them to reach their maximum potential. I just feel like that brings in a lot of the, the things that we're talking about, and we could even add in access there. But I feel like, um, all the elements, you know, in order for that student to, um, to reach their maximum potential, it fits, fits into that space. So if there's, um, somebody that wants to wordsmith and figure that out, like, um, that's, that's my suggestion there.
All right, Trish, you wanna go next?
Sure. I'm wondering too, we have our strategic plan, and it keeps coming back. And so I'm wondering if maybe there's somewhere there that might be a good anchor for discussion, and then we can popcorn that out or pull it out, because we have empowered student learning, and to me, that gets at what I've been asking about as far as like, is there something here for curriculum, programs? Um, uh, ratios in the classroom, then empowered staff, that gets at what Anna says. Impactful family engagement, we wanna make sure our families stay engaged. Equitable access, Nicosi just mentioned that. And then safe and innovative learning environments, and I think that also gets us into student experience, our extracurriculars, transportation, social emotional, facilities. So I'm also wondering, is there something there that we already have in our strategic plan and a way to use that? Or somehow kind of put that into place?
All right, board members, we need to hear some thoughts on the strategic plan, adding it to student experience.
I think we need to make sure we can measure it, right?
That's, I think that's a, I think.
Measure the impact, right? So if we, if we put something in there, we wanna be able to measure an impact on that commitment from the lever. How does the lever impact that component?
And I think what, I like where you're going with this, Trish, but we also have the leading measures update, and I'm just wondering, like, is that just already, we're already getting an update on that, but I do agree with you, like, how, that is a framework, but part of the framework still includes the long range plans. I think they're kinda separate, but they still exist, coexist, does that make sense?
Yeah, it just feels like we said, the strategic plan is ultimately where we wanna go as a district. And my question is, you know, then are we making decisions that are still gonna get us towards what our strategic plan is? Or are we saying, we have a new set of commitments, and is that where, where we're going? I don't know, it's just.
No, I want you to keep noodling on that, because when we have our board retreat, we're going to dig into that. So you're going the right track. I just think that's for, we're gonna get, we're gonna put a pin in that for right now, so.
I, I would rather us not focus in on the strategic plan, because I'm looking forward to that discussion at our board retreat.
Oh, yeah.
I think a lot of the work around the strategic, I think the world has changed post COVID. And so, I'm, I'm just not sure. Like, I really am looking forward to us evaluating and having discussions around that, so I would rather not tie this into, into another framework.
That, that, I'm fine. Again, like I said, strategic plan, we're just thinking, student experience, I do wonder if there is something, um, as I'm now looking at this, student experience and student learning, our empowered student learning, we have, if we don't use the strategic plan words, we can use something else. But I do wonder if those are two different, so I'll keep noodling, um, but that's just a thought. Shadé?
Um, and as it relates to ax, student experience, so maybe access or, um, just some other access to programs or, or what have you. Um, something we, we've heard about a lot was concern about impact on different student populations. So like, for example, our special education students and any other, they're different, and making sure we're keeping an eye on, on where the gaps are. And so trying to make sure we focus or have, have a lens on that as we're looking at the student experience, but specific to student groups.
Okay, so within student experience, pulling out specific groups? Because right now, it, um, it, it's trying to encompass, I would say, our entire student population, not specific, specific groups. Um, again, so if we look at a lever and how it impacts student experience, I would hope, and we will, make sure that there's not a negative impact on any individualized program or group as part of that evaluation.
Uh, cuz our core beliefs go each and every student, right? It's each and every student. And then when we start getting into each population of students, we're gonna, we're gonna miss a student, guys. It, it's going to happen. And so I think we need to keep it as broad as possible. To, we have to.
I'm not saying it shouldn't be all students. You can have all students, but also be mindful of the student groups that can be impacted as you're looking at all students.
I think that could be in the student experience.
Like our special education, our five of fours, our gifted and talented, on level, is that what you're doing?
We need to be very careful with that, guys.
I'm just letting you know.
I, I would.
I wanna make sure I understand what I'm hearing.
I would, yeah, I think that's what you're hearing, but I would prefer for us to keep it general, knowing that as we bring levers back for, for conversation. We're gonna make sure to point out the impacts on particular student groups, if they're affected separately. Because their student experience is at risk. So, for example, if we're gonna talk about Quest, then obviously we're gonna bring you a lot more information about our Quest population than everybody else, because that's what the lever addresses. But I think you have to allow us to bring that to you.
Dr. Green makes a good point, because beyond just this, those four columns, we have first and second order impacts, worst case scenarios in which we will br, surface some of those, um, impacts below the, below the surface. You, you know, like, like special groups and things like that, that will be part of that analysis. So really, we are bringing more information than we typically would bring you, um, tied to these levers.
Yeah, I, um, that first, first three words there, I don't like the ensuring every decision. Um, so, I, I could imagine, and again, wordsmithed it like, based on what folks are saying, like providing access to opportunities. And Gloria was saying some really good stuff that I can't remember, but.
From the core belief.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I, I'm just trying to mix it with the like, providing access to opportunities that enable students to reach their full growth and potential.
Yes, so thank you. Process wise, Christina is taking notes and, and pulling all of, like, if you say core belief, she's gonna pull the core beliefs, she's gonna grab that. Um, and then we're gonna take a break in a little bit, and we're gonna go back there like we did last time and talk through that and, and then bring it back to you and, and show you what we've got.
Paul, do you wanna add in anything about student experience?
Um, not really. You guys are really doing a good job of, of explaining what your thoughts are. Um, I'll go back to what Jeremy said though about just trying to simplify it as much as possible. Um, the more we complicate it, the more it'll be complicated for them, so, um, core beliefs, uh, student experience, decisions, just try the best we can to simplify it, and lord knows, we could always go back and change it, but at least give them a starting point.
Okay, I, anybody have anything else to add to student experience? It seems like we pretty much, we're, Gloria. All right, we're gonna move to the next one. I can't, stewardship. Who wants to kick us off? Shadé? I mean, I think that's pretty.
I, I think that one's.
It's pretty easy, it's pretty good.
It sounds, it's, it's simple, it's to the point. Basically, uh, we have a deficit, we have a budget. We need to keep those, we have this financial responsibility, um, to be, you know, fiscally responsible and to be transparent about th- those numbers. And I think this hits on both that financial management and the responsibility, and also the transparency that's important. So, I think it sounds great.
I think one thing I'd like to add, sorry, Shadé, is just, it, um, it pushes us to look at, um, facility use and long-term stability. It's kinda just what you said, it's just wordsmithing, that's really it, and just, uh, responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars.
So when I look at the word resources, resources can be people, it can be money, uh, financial, it can be, so, are we just, in, for this particular one, are we really just looking at the financial, um, impact? Or resources, it could be people, it could be finances, it could be, um, assets, like, yeah.
Yes.
Trish, Paul, and Nicosi, would you like to add anything?
Okay, I agree with the straightforwardness. I do wanna know as we're going along, and I think this is too far, like a step too much ahead. So I just need that scope as we're going along. As you bring this to us, we're only gonna look at one year? Cuz to me, s- stewardship is also knowing down the road the ten years or the five years.
Let's just focus on the commitment first part, remember?
So I just wanna make sure, as we're, we're, we're doing the definition of the word, and so I wanna make sure is as we're defining it, because if we're defining it, and you're gonna say, oh, well, this is good stewardship, I'm gonna go, wait, for just this year, is this still good stewardship in five years from now, so.
Yeah, I think that's where you get, resources may seem general, but guess what? Resources could mean a couple of different things, depending on what scenario, if you're talking budget, long-range planning, it, it kinda evolves with whatever topic you're, you're focused on.
All right, board members, we're gonna move to sustainability.
How does this not overlap with stewardship? I don't know what I'm looking at, it just, I just, I, I just keep thinking. So does it mean we're gonna be doing the same, I mean, right? Is it the same lens? Are we double weighting? How do, how does, how do you see this different, Jeremy?
So, when it comes to sustainability, you can look long-term stability, including financial health, so it's kinda getting to where you're talking about, long-term. Sustainability is not looking at just next year. If we, so if you pull a budget lever, we're not just, let's sustain for next year, right? There's downrange impacts that are, that are made with that lever. That's what sustainability is. It goes beyond just, um, the next year.
Jeremy, can I, I'm just processing as you're talking, it seems like, take land sale, for an example. So stewardship, that may be something, a lever we wanna pull, because stewardship, it helps us with increasing the budget for this year. But sustainability is, we think long-term, and our assets, maybe that is an impact down the road that is not necessarily a good thing, right? Am I thinking of that correctly?
Yeah, again, it, it could sustain you for the next year, but it doesn't have necessarily a long-term impact, because it is a one-time injection. That's a great example.
Board members, any other? Man, y'all are, y'all did your homework.
I, I would like to visit, are we done with sustainability?
It sounds like we are.
I would like to visit history and identity again, because I was not clear at the end of that conversation exactly what we're doing. I just wanna make sure I understand.
I was, I was on it. Um, yeah, I, I don't see the, I, I'd rather replace that whole, like, strike that one, and I really wanna see, like, the staff experience. And when we talk about, so, I know I'm jumping here, and y'all can go back if y'all wanna talk more about history and identity. But I, I even think there's components of identity, um, to some degree with our staff. Um, and, and I think it is a really important commitment on how we're supporting our staff. Um, with the resources that they need, um, with the time for PD, a- all the things that our staff need to be successful, so that our students can be successful. Um, so I would love to, um, remove the history, identity, and, and maybe there's some element of identity in, in, you know, um, embedded in our staff experience.
So, I, I just wanna make sure that we got agreement there.
Yeah, I was, when we talked about that, I kind of agreed with that. Well, identity, we al, we also have that in our student experience as well, but just being more forward-looking because the, um, some of our history and is from a period that is very different from what we're experiencing now. So we shouldn't be too tethered to that, because we need to be forward-looking, so.
Trish, you good? Paul?
I agree, get rid of it.
Nicosi? Strike it for me. Well, that's one, two, three, four, we're good. Hey, Will of the board, I'm just kidding. Y'all, y'all, please speak up, please. If y'all wanna noodle on it, and when they come back and wordsmith it, I, I mean, I really want you to speak up right now. That would be great.
Love for us to talk more as a, as a team about the staff experience, about, so we've thrown that out. I've given some ideas about it, but love to hear from helping Christina over here with some more about what, what does that mean? And then Jeremy, when we're thinking of things that we can put in a commitment to be able to weigh and measure, what makes sense when you hear staff experience? What makes sense to you and, and that, you know, with, with that lens?
But, so I, I think, uh, first step would be to really compare it and run parallel with student experience to where the opportunities, right, talking growth again, right, so are maintaining those, um, opportunities. And I should have the core belief memorized, but I will in a second, once we write it down. Um, yeah, and so I think tying it, I think student and staff experience are tied together a lot. Um, and I'm not saying combine them, but I think the language is gonna be probably pretty, pretty similar. So if you have any feedback, great. If not, then we'll try to, try to work on it quickly, um, in the back.
I, I like what we have for our core beliefs. I just, you know, for me, again, it's that teacher stability. We know, you know, that we need to keep our teachers. It's so expensive to having to retrain teachers, creates that inconsistent for our student experience, and then workload balance. I mean, that right there, we, we've heard it when we start talking about, um, you know, what programs can be cut, and the impact secondary had on them last year. You know, I, I think, and I know we can only do so much, but we still gotta keep that at the forefront of this decision, because not only are our staff gonna be impacted, our students are gonna be impacted, and that's gonna impact every single one of those lever or commitments on there. The other thing I think for me, and it's just the morale, teaching and the, teaching right now is not easy. We know that with the legislative changes, and so, you know, just remembering when we're going through these decisions, like possibly reconsolidating, going to a low staff model, that these decisions are impacting educators in the classroom. This is their future and career. I don't have the answer on what this looks like, but I still think it needs to be one of the forefronts, like up here, when we're thinking about these big decisions as we go forward.
I agree. I was gonna go back to the unique, the history, whatever.
Hold on, let's do staffing really quick, can you put a pin in that? We're gonna, let's finish up with staffing, staff experience, and then we'll head back to there, Trish. Paul?
Uh, I, just to go back to what Jeremy said, it needs to be measurable. Uh, history and identity, you can't actually put a number on it, cuz everyone's got their own figure that could be, and, but, you talk about the, the staffing, the staffing can be measured. You know, you can ask them how well they felt, how would it have grown, so it needs to be measurable.
And, and we do have surveys, right? We do do our surveys with our staff, staff, uh, campus surveys, so.
All right, um, when we're talking about staff, the one that, you know, was thinking, you know how, Sarah, you were saying, here's an example of this and this, uh, commitment in play. I was thinking about the decision to remove library aids, right? And when we did that across the board in an under-enrolled campus, now you have a library that's supporting three hundred students, three hundred and fifty, but in terms of like that staff experience, you have over-enrolled elementary schools where you now have one librarian supporting over seven hundred students. And so, um, that would be something I would think about in some of these levers, right? What is, what is the impact of this lever to that staff experience, right? Um, so I, th- those are the things, I'm, and I'm saying that, verbalizing that, so as we're thinking about the words So as we're thinking about the words, and we're putting that in there, then thinking of that scenario, how does that scenario played out? And that's kind of what I've been doing with these. I've been thinking about all the levers, even though I know we weren't supposed to do that yet. But we're all thinking about the levers, and then we're thinking about how would the levers work with this commitment? And that's where I kept coming back to history, identity. I just don't, it's a very subjective, um, commitment, and it kept breaking my little charts, um, for, for the different levers, right? So that, that's why.
I, this is, I don't know if this goes here with the staff experience, but, you know, when we went through this budget process this last March, you know, we had a lot of conversation about surplus and what this process looks like. So I just, uh, one of the things I have is just supporting, reassigning staff strategically, which we've done. So just making sure that that is a forefront when we're talking about staff experience.
I also, uh, you know, as I, I keep thinking about impactful family engagement that's in our core beliefs. There, I mean, it's all over how we want to, you know, partner with our community, our parents. We need our businesses to be our partner. We need our parents to be our partners. That's really makes a difference with learning for our students. But as I keep thinking about the levers that we're going to look at and pull, and how they may impact things, I just see that students and teachers are the ones that are more within our locus of control. And if we can take care of students and we can take care of teachers, then I think our families will be impacted positively. So I feel, you know, I wanted to see, you know, what would a lever look like, and I just can't see how, it seems like that adds too much. I feel like if we focus on students and teachers, I think that gets, so I, I, I agree with your, your student comment. Uh, uh, teacher con- staff experience and growth. There you go. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I just want to point out that it's much more than teachers. It's, it's all of our staff.
Includes transportation, CNS, custodian, everybody.
Right. Oh, that's why we'll just say staff experience, right?
Yeah, staff, right.
I was thinking about what you said too, Trish, and I think it's taking care of our staff, taking care of our students. And I think the part that's really important for community is managing resources responsibly and transparently to maximize value for students and maintain community trust. I think that's the piece that's going to be real important with our families, with our community, with our business partners, is, um, being responsible and being very transparent about that. And, and then I feel like the other parts, take care of our staff, take care of our students, and, and then it fits.
Trish, did you want to add what we, what you wanted to say about history, identity?
All right, let's, hold on, let's, are we staff, are we done with staff experience? Board members, we're moving on? We feel good? Jeremy, Christina feel good with that, those comments? Awesome. All right, Trish, now it's on you for, uh, history, identity.
Actually, I'm going to take one more shot here at this, but, I mean, Nikosi, if you have an idea, jump in. I, I liked, uh, Nikosi's suggestion on what's makes it un- what makes us unique. And I think, you know, all of these pieces together make us unique, but is there another, like, commitment we've made that is, like, all-encompassing? So I was thinking of, would that be deeper learning? Is that one, because it is in our core beliefs, because we said that's there? Or is it possible that when we break out, if we break out academics and experience, then deeper learning goes there? Um, so I, I was noodling and pondering the unique to L I S D. Um, I don't have much there, though. So Nikosi, if you have nothing else there, I'm getting ready to say.
Yeah, I, I think that we can accomplish, yeah. I, I think, I think obviously we're, like, is the identity part, is like, what's unique to us. The other term that came to mind was like, culture, right? It just, it just leans on like, who we are. I think we can achieve it if, as Gloria and I think Anna mentioned, like, if we just ensure that these definitions align to our core beliefs and, like, have language that are, that, that is unique to us, and doesn't feel as generic, then I think we can, we can achieve that.
Because those guiding documents are our identity, right? This, I mean, this is what we lean into when we make every decision in this room. Okay. Board members, are there any other ideas to add to these commitments? I am so proud of y'all for doing your work. All right, last call, last call, because when they're going to bring it back in here, we are going to be great. It's going to be beautiful, and y'all are going to take it and run with it, administration. All right, board members, we are going to take a break. I'm not quite sure how long yet. Um, but it is 7:48 PM, and we're going to take a break. We'll leave it at that.
It is 8:16 PM and we have returned from break. And administration, do y'all want to take it away on what you've wordsmithed together?
Okay, here you go, version two. So, wow, that was impressive. Christian, I'm impressed, in the slide and all.
It's okay, we make mistakes and we can fix it. All right, board members, will you please look over the draft and commitments of operational definitions, please?
Is this just, like, are we wordsmithing?
No.
Or, okay. There's a lot of "that's" in there for me, as of, just for wordsmiths, so, like, providing access to opportunities, protecting and enhancing staff learning, and all of the elements, or leave that protect and enhance staff learning and all the elements that impacting the overall staff. It's just, yeah, it's just a lot of "that's." And the first sentence too, if we can look at removing some of those.
All right, board members, student experience, any other things, thoughts towards this commitment?
I love the staff experience.
Hold on, hold on. Everyone, I'm giving everyone a chance to weigh in here, student experience, we're great. All right, moving on, now Gloria, go.
Kudos to Christina and staff for the staff experience. I think y'all heard and y'all brought all those pieces in, so I liked that a lot.
I like that one a lot, too.
One of the things we thought about was whether they had to go together, like, student experience is the same. You'll notice that the operational definition is identical, but we, we thought back there that they do need to be separate. Because there are levers that affect one differently than the other, and so that's why we kept them separate, yeah.
Thank you all for doing that. Board members, any other comments or discussion in regards to the words being used for the definition of staff experience? If not, we're going to move on.
Okay, so they've updated them, so will you look one more time?
I approve. Board members, you good with student and experience and staff experience, the words, definitions? I don't know.
And we did not change stewardship or sustainability.
All right, board members, everyone's great. Trish, come on, now's the time.
Are you sure? Does that read right for stewardship? I'm just catching it now, managing resources responsibly and transparently to maximize value for students and maintain community trust? Is that? And to ma, I guess, it's fine. It's fine.
I would like to get it right. We have an opportunity to do that now, so let's, let's get it right, if you don't mind. To maintain community trust?
I think to maintain, because I'm thinking, like, how, how do you maintain community trust? While maintaining, there you go.
You keeping up, Christina?
Good, good job. You can't leave yet, okay? You got a big piece of this puzzle. All right, board members, how do y'all feel about this? Most importantly, Jeremy, Dr. Garing, how do y'all feel about this in regards to taking these commitments and operational definitions for this framework? How do you feel?
I feel good. I'll point out, they all start with an S, I don't know what that means, but that's something. And, but what I did want to cover, like, what will this look like? Like, what is the next step for this framework? So what we will do administratively, as we go through this budget process, looking and identifying potential levers, is the framework you saw, that big spreadsheet, blank spreadsheet, administratively, that's what we're going to use. We're going to use this tool, comparing levers to commitments, and then there's some scoring associated with that, right? The impacts. And then we'll put that into potential bullet items of what that impact, those impacts look like in worst-case scenario. So what's going to happen is later on, you're going to see a spreadsheet filled out, and so you have additional context. I will say right now, as we look at impacts, positives, negatives, you know, we may look at how we do that the most effective way, you know, possibly, you know, a scale too, from a negative two to a two, we may look at that in order to, to refine a little bit. But this goes a long way to helping us administratively, look at those levers and how they impact the system and, and these commitments. So thank you.
Board members, any other questions? All right, thank you so much, Jeremy, for guiding us through this, appreciate it. Board members, thank you for doing your homework and getting to the point, and now I'm excited to see what y'all come back with, Jeremy. So appreciate the work. All right, board members, next, we're going to go to 782, Budget Update, Fiscal Year 2024, '25, 2025, '26, and Budget Assumptions for 2026, '27. Pete, you're up.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Garing. Tonight, we have a budget update for the year we just finished, the year we are in, and the year we are planning for. So we're, we're going to hit this pretty hard, and in order for me to move slides, we're going to... All right, thank you, Daniel, for giving that. So our purpose, again, we're going to talk about the last three years, the year we just finished, '24, '25, the current year that we're in, '25, '26, as well as obviously the, the conversation that we started very early on this runway for the '26, '27 budget. on this runway for the '26, '27 budget. You recall, last year, we kind of did the review, revise. So we reviewed, we did a special education master review, master schedule review, PMS review. We talked about some very early stages of ideas to increase revenue and efficiencies, current tech programs, PMS, attendance, et cetera. Those conversations continued all throughout '24, '25, and into the '25, '26 process. Talked about decreasing expenditures, which we did, and then discussed choice programs. Now, as we begin '25, '26, we kind of go from review, revise, to revise, recalibrate. So we're implementing some of the revenue enhancements initiatives while we're still coming up with more ideas to, to enhance revenue that you're familiar with, as we've talked about in the last couple, last month or two. Working on implementing the appropriate recommendations from our program reviews. We were early in those stages. We are reviewing staffing guidelines, HR is meeting with the principals and going through the campus, each campus level. They are going through and coming up with different scenarios and having some good conversations. We're looking at the other departments as well. We've got a couple of reviews that are completed. I believe we have Tasbe looking at central office, that one is still in the works. So we're looking at how do we kind of revamp, revise what we do? How do we decrease expenditures but still maintain our main focus of the student experience? As we begin '26, '27, recalibrate, reinvent. This is the implementation of the student programs with focus, staffing and guidelines, alignments, initiatives, all the things that we're doing, and we've been poring over studies and reviews and conversations we've been having all start to come into play in the spring as we really take all that, all those conversations and build the plan and reinvent how we do what we do, how we go about it. And then as we put the final touches with the board and the administration and staff on the '26, '27 budget. So as you can see, we are here in the middle. We've got a lot going on. We are all now professional jugglers, so we can, you know, we've got 14, 15 different things going at one time and, and complex things, but we're, we're right in the middle of it. And we're, we feel good about where we're at, but we know that we still have a lot of, some difficult decisions. But we also, those difficult decisions are typically made a lot easier by doing the work that we're doing now.
Pete, on that slide, before you leave on three. On year three, um, so we're saying, these things impact budget? Are you going to be bringing these things back to us in budget? Because I'm thinking about enrollment. Like, we can solve all of our budget issues, but it still doesn't solve enrollment. Like, we still have uneven enrollment, right? You still have high enrollment and low enrollment. How are we going to fix that? Is that recalibrate and reinvent too? Is that part of the...
Yeah, there's, I mean, while this presentation tonight, probably when I give it, is really more focused on the budget per se, but it is a lot bigger than just the budget. There's a lot of different things going on as far as attendance and students and enrollment and what we're competing against and who we're competing for, the students. And a lot of those conversations are, budget is a big piece of that. It affects the budget, but there's other conversations outside that we may not see that budget impact for a year or two or three down the road, but we are having those discussions. So if we look at '24, '25 and the '25, '26 budget updates, on the little section on your left, if you look at the, the red circle is the, the total net change or forecasted net change in fund balance. So when we brought to you on June 19th, we projected about $21.8 million decrease in, in fund balance. And we also told you at that time, that did include about $4.5 million of Shar's funds that we had hoped to receive before October 15th. They haven't come in yet, it's, we haven't even had the court hearing or the court date yet, so it's going to be a while. So it's going to be more closer to $27 million, 26.97. Now, the $4.5 million will come. I mean, the state does owe us that, we just have to go through this process. It could be in this year. And so when that money comes this year, that money just kind of, just gets set aside and we hope to roll that into fund balance. We're not using that money for anything else. It's just because of the timing, we didn't get it by the end of June for our fiscal year. And then we also did talk to our auditor and they would have let us book it if we got it before October 15th, and that didn't come true. So just to give you a, a big chunk of that, of that difference. So like I said, when I, when we talked last time or in June, we did mention that we did include the $4.5 million, but weren't 100% certain we were going to get that before the, the drop dead date. So if you go over to the '25, '26 section on the right side, we adopted the budget with a $20.2 million deficit. And then, I'm sorry, the $22.2 million deficit. So now we've updated it, so as we mentioned earlier, our last workshop we had, our last special meeting, we have done, redone the template. New template came out, there was new frozen values that we put into effect in a different hold harmless visi... Hold harmless provision increased our funding about $6.8 million. So this is reflecting in that, which just shows that 11.371. That was appreciative, it was great. I don't know if that 6.8 is in addition to the 10.5 from the other one, or my gut tells me it's going to be part of that 10.5, and we're hoping to get the other 3.7. We've had good contact with Mo Casey, who's had conversations with the commissioner. Talked with Amy Copeland over at Director of Finance at TEA, and Al Johnson as well. They're all aware of the situation. The last information we have from the commissioner is that all, all 10 districts are giving templates and they're all using estimated F T2 values and they're using estimated frozen values. And those will not become, the frozen values will know about November, will know the state number in December, and then those numbers will be sent to TEA from the Comptroller's Office at the end of January, and TEA will rerun those numbers in early February. So the commissioner says, hey, at this stage of the game, let's just wait until February when everybody has hard numbers and they're, we're not doing enough estimates or forecasts anymore. And then they will revisit that conversation and we'll see where we all land. And so that's where we're at still on the table. I mean, so we'll have to wait a little bit, but we, we did get a little bit of good news with that other hold harmless provision. And so that, that helps us out. It does not get us out of the clear, I mean, we know that, I'm not, I'm not saying anything that everybody doesn't understand, but it does, I guess you want to say soften the blow a little bit? I mean, it does help us out a little bit. But, and we have another graph coming up here, a graph that will show you what that does or what it did. But it was a good sign, and like I said, hopefully, once we sit down in February and we really run the numbers, hopefully there is an opportunity to get some more additional hold harmless funds if, if in fact we can show that we did not receive the same funding as the prior year plus House Bill 2.
Pete, in your conversations with the other nine districts, have they been affected by the other frozen levies, hold harmless, or...
I have talked to one of those districts and I, they have not been, did not help them, but I don't know if they used, if they updated the frozen levy piece.
Yeah, so it would be interesting, I think, to have that conversation with as many of them as possible to find out what, what changes they saw on this side. Because if we're the only ones that saw a change here, that may impact how we approach the commissioner in terms of the other. Because there are two separate issues.
Yeah, and I revised, I've talked to two districts. One is in Harris County, and they will have no idea what their frozen values are until the end of November, so they weren't even going to try. But the other district is, is, has the same data that we have. But I don't know if they didn't use, update that number or they were still using. We've ran both templates. Becky in my office spent a good hour, hour and a half with, with Tasbe, and they went through it line by line on them, and they completely agree with how the formos we have to estimate that, that frozen value numbers. We feel as good as you can feel coming up with an estimate, but...
I just don't want us to be complacent about what we're owed back from the state.
No.
I, I don't want, just because we got a windfall in one bucket, say that that's okay to just offset the other bucket with this windfall.
No, if other districts are getting that, that whole harmless provision, then that still opens up our 10 and a half on, on my side. So like I said, we'll have those, we will run all 10 districts, well, I'm sure we'll rerun everything for Mo Casey after we get our hard numbers in January. And then we'll have, I'm sure we'll have another Zoom meeting, we'll all meet together to discuss and strategize and look at whatever, what the numbers show before Mo and Casey or all of us have a meeting with the commissioner, however that works. But I mean, we will definitely look at it from both, both pieces.
Thank you.
Forgot they were there, sorry. I remembered, I just didn't have another thing. So if you look at our budget projections, now we're looking at three years, the next three years out, '26, '27, all the way up through '28, '29. So if you look at the section that is...
Sorry, Pete, can I make you go back one, one more time? I just want to make sure that we're very clear about the 4.5. That's going to show up in '25, '26 now. And it's going to offset that 11.3. It's going to make that look different, correct?
Yeah, it would.
It will make it look different, but it's really not, because you have to offset it against how different '24, '25 looks, correct?
Yeah, so we'll, instead of taking 22 million out of fund balance for '24, '25, we'll take 27. And then next year, we do not have that $4.5 million in this year's, but we have 4 million budget for this year. We don't have last year's 4.5, so it will go up. When we get it, then we should add another $4.5 million.
Just want to make sure when we get there, that we don't forget that it might look better in '25, '26. We mustn't forget that we've already eaten that cost in '24, '25.
Yeah, we could be sitting here a year from now or so and say, hey, look, we're, we didn't take near as much out, but it's just a one year, because we got $4.5 million for this one year, a year off.
Thank you, sorry.
Oh, no problem. So if you look at the, the budget projections starting at '26, '27, '27, '28, '28, '29, when we look at our deficit exceeding the, the parameter. So, you know, we, we mentioned before that we were, we were about 16 above that, now we're, it puts us down about 8.2. The next year, that puts us at about 14.7, and then the year after that, it puts us about 17.8. All things fixed, all things being equal, none of the conversations that we've had about many of the changes are reflected into any of these, these numbers. These are just as of today, as of the same staffing, as of the same schedules, the same, everything's the same. The only changes on the revenue side are we do have, you know, the new elementary built in there, and when that takes effect, we do have fast growth allotment that's kind of fluctuate a little bit. But other than that, that's no new revenue, no new additional, you know, any advertising. Anything of that nature is not reflected in, in the revenues. We kept everything the exact same that we have right now.
But the, the, like, the frozen levy, hold harmless flows forward, right?
Yes.
And so all of that is reflected here.
Yeah, this is one of those, this is one of those weird years, and, and the good news was that we just did it two years ago. You don't, you don't do, they don't change the thing, again, no, I won't say thank goodness, because it's great as a homeowner, but they don't change the homestead exemption very often, but they have done it quite a bit recently. So this is why the frozen levy pieces becomes, because when they increase that homestead exemption from 100,000 to 140, they, they hold us protected, or protected on what that, on our revenue being decreased. And so the way the formos work, they have to go back, you can't compare one year to the next with one being at 100 and one being at 140, so you have to come up with a, a calculation and estimate. And so it, it can get a little cumbersome, and if you make one or two small mistakes, it can have some big ramifications. So that's why, and Becky does fabulous work, but that's why she actually spent a good time with Tasbe and with Mo Casey as well. There's, like I said, there's three templates. She spent time with each of them to make sure we're all on the same page, we're all on the same, making the same assumptions and feel just as, as good about those assumptions. So as you can see, as we, you know, anytime I would do this for any three-year period, it gets worse each year just because there's, it's always, there's a session in there or two, there's other, you know, we, we have it based on, you know, not a whole lot of, of, of changing on the, on the enrollment, we're using the reduced growth model. And so that could change, open enrollment could add 50 kids, it could have 150, it could add 250. So I mean, a lot of those things will, will change, but this is just based on, on the past data that we, we built this year's budget on. And then going forward, then we'll update it when the, the next, later this month, when the next, when the PASA comes back and updates that information. And we just, each year, we take the, you know, the information that we have as a three-year, and then we just, we update with the most recent, and we get updated information, and it gives us the best forecast that we can have, or that we're able to get at that time.
Pete, before you leave seven, I have a question on the assumptions, just so I can continue to follow as we have the discussions. So federal revenue, you've left it consistent for all three years? Yet it seems like they've been signaling that they're going to be sending the funds, our funding to the state to give out to districts? So are we, did you feel, what are your assumptions, making sure that's going to be the same? Or is it like, who knows, but here's where we're at?
That, that federal revenue is just Shar's.
Okay, okay.
It's not the title, it's not entitlements, it's not any of those things, yeah.
Okay, and then for state revenue, you have 123, then you drop, and then you go back up. Tell me again, what are you expecting to happen then in state revenue?
If memory serves me correctly, '27, '28, I believe, is we have, this year we go up in fast growth, next year we drop down in fast growth, the numbers.
And then payroll, is that just assuming the standard of percentage raise? Is that what you're assuming on the growth there?
There is, there is no assumption of, there is no raise in, in the payroll. So we'll have, if you, the only really changes we there have is we have, is TRS portion that, that we pay on the TRS side.
So you're assuming that's going to increase?
Yeah, we have some small assumptions in there, probably some new staff, there'll be some new staff positions in there. I think Elementary 31 is that, is, we hire a principal usually mid-year of that year and, and the admin assistants. So there's some other positions as well. There's a handful of positions that will just to grow. Then you got, there is about 100, you know, there's 22, 92 kids, student growth in that enrollment. That'll probably be a teacher or two or three, depending on where they land. So I mean, those things, the TRS piece, will get you that little, what is that, about a million? 1.9, 1.8 million? And I can get an exact for you, but just off the top of my head, that's, I can tell you that's going to be a big portion of it.
No, no, thank you, I just wanted to understand the assumptions, because I think that's important as we start looking at what's going to happen to fund balance.
Yeah, and then also recall that our teachers, there's typically, we don't call it a step increase, but when you go from one year hiring schedule to the next, there's usually about a $250, $350 change automatically. So that times 3,000 teachers, you know, gets you a little big chunk of that as well, so. So just as we talk about fund balance, so we've talked about how, you know, the monies that are coming out of fund balance, that the expenditures exceed the revenues. So just a real quick rehash here of what fund balance is. For those who may not know, fund balance is just, at the end of each year, you add your revenues, add your, your expenses. If your revenues exceed expenses, you add to the fund balance, AKA, we call it a savings account, if you will. And then if expenses exceed, then it takes from, and this, they accumulate. But it, there's also some, it's not just, it sits there and doesn't serve a purpose. It actually does serve a purpose for school districts. It does provide a cushion against revenue shortfalls, like on the year where you don't get your Shar's revenue or something. You have that for, for cash flow. It ensures that our board, compliance with board policy is three months or 25%. That will help us with cash flow, because we still have, we don't get our taxes until, for us mainly, we get vast majority of it in December and January. I get a state payment in September or October, and I get one more in August. So I'm running at a deficit for 11 of the, or 10 of the 12 months of the year on a monthly basis. Overall, I'm, I'm actually not that bad. But right now, we're at a difficult spot, but I mean, typically, it's just the way the cash flow is. You got to have enough cash in the bank to, when you run payroll and, you know, when you do your, when you have your bond payments, et cetera. So we, we make sure that we have the cash flow. And then our policy, CE Local, I think I mentioned this one time earlier, but basically just to preserve financial stability, the districts should therefore maintain assigned, non-assigned fund balances equal to or exceeding for three months. And then if, in fact, we go below that, then the superintendent, by board policy, should prepare a plan for the board to approval. So this is a slide that we showed you before. And then the, the revised graph is with the $6.8 million on the second hold harmless provisions. It gives us a little, little help, but it says, it doesn't get us out of, out of going below the 119, 120 million, the green line of our fund balance. So the first box there says 26.9 million decrease, that is what for the end of the '24, '25 year what we're projecting, which we should have audited numbers when the audit is submitted, brought to the board next month. And then that's, puts us at about $163 million fund balance, 114 million is our three months of operating expenses. Then the next year, based on that, the, the deficit, we are estimating going from 163 to about, was 145 and it went 147. So we're still above the 117, which is the green line, but we're getting closer. And then the next year, as '26, '27 comes to an end, we're getting really close. And somewhere between '26, '27, '27, '28, we actually cross below our, our threshold. Now, again, those numbers are based on us not making any changes, not doing anything different. And so we're looking at it, you know, we've had many conversations with the board. And this is not new to anyone in this room or who listens to the, you know, watches the board presentations. We made some changes last year, which helped. We got a little help from the state on this, on the 6.8, hoping to get more. And then we are still having knee, knee deep in conversations about opportunities to, to make changes going forward that will help reduce our costs or increase revenues while still maintaining our, our, our main focus of student experience. or increase revenues while still maintaining our main focus of student experience. So that is right, what we're in the middle of right now. We've had that, the process that Jeremy walked you through just a few minutes ago, and that's, that's what, that's what we're doing. So we'll, just want to bring this to you, just so you can see the difference in that, with that state payment made, and then just to see what we have about, you know, we have about two years, one to two years, with the bulk of it needing to be done this first, in this, this spring, or this fall and spring.
Pete, before you leave that slide, you know, that fund balance, as I'm looking at it, up until 23, 24, we were kind of up in here in the 190, 179, 185. It wasn't until just last, it dropped, and now we're projecting to keep dropping in these significant ways. Here's my question. If, and you can't, I don't, I'm not expecting you to answer it tonight, but what I would like to know is, what do you think, based on the assumptions and things we're working? Are we trying to quit addressing fund balance at all? Or are we trying to put savings in? What is ultimately, when we're looking at what we're going to do for the budget, what would we say is sustainable? Because we know this isn't, but I'm just curious, and you can answer this later, I'm just, you don't, you don't have to be on the spot. I'm just curious, like, where is sustainable from your point of view?
There's a couple answers for that question, and I'll answer real brief, because I want to spend a lot of time on it. But first and foremost, you know, if we're going to continue with a 1.5% deficit threshold, and we have about that cushion, cushions, I don't like that word, but it's in payroll, vacancies, things, we can get to the ultimate point to where we budget at 1.5, and we do break even at the end of the year. That would be ideal. Now, that's a way out, we have, there's a gap between us and getting there, but the other side of the coin is, there will be probably, probably, we'll need to get to a three to five-year plan somewhere in there, where we can at least rebuild that fund balance. What do we want to rebuild it at? How much more above the three months do we want to be at? I mean, I don't know, we need to be at 190 again. Or sometimes, we may have directives from the board that we want to build something, that we don't want to do it through a bond, and we do want to do it. So we have to maybe for five or 10 years have a plan to build up that fund balance, to pay cash for something. That would be something way down the road. It's really easier to do 10 years ago, with a different funding system, than it is to do with today's school finance. But, I mean, it was done in the past, it just was, it took a long time, but now with the funding change, I would probably say going back to, you know, 2000, 2010, but definitely to House Bill III in 2019, it's getting harder and harder to increase your fund balance. I mean, you barely have the funds enough just to operate at, you know, at what you, at the level you want to operate at. So there's the fine balance between, you know, being at that green line, but being at that green line just helps you with cash flow. It doesn't really give you a whole lot of help if you have an emergency situation, if you have a, you know, a severe storm, if you have, you know, something where a campus burns, and you have to take some money upfront, you know, until the insurance money pays a year later. So things of that nature. So, you know, where do we want to be at? Do we want to be, you know, a percent, or 10, or 20, or 30 million above the three months? And where's our happy medium where we can be at? But ultimately, you want to be at the green line or higher. And then above that is just, you know, where are we at, and what, what situation are we in? So once we revise, go through the spring semester, or just spring, going through all these discussions, we get an idea of exactly how much reduction we have, how much revenue increase we have, how much we get a final answer from the state on the hold harmless. We can revisit that conversation. I think we'll have much better numbers to know where we want to go, and what timeline we want to go and go about it.
I just, I don't know if this slide does it, but when I'm looking at it, to me, it makes me think, right now, and again, I'll have to look at it later again to make sure, is this the story, what legislation happened in the last session? Because we were still tracking, I mean, we were still apart. It, we don't really start having this issue until now, after all the legislation comes in and all the budget, it just seems like, it seems like this might be a story for the 89th of what happened, but.
Yeah, if you look at our data, we haven't had an increase in the basic allotment since this, the graph begins in 2019, 20. That was when it went to 61, 60, and I don't really include the 55 we got this year as an increase, because they took it from the gold penny yield. So revenues are flat all through that time. You had some enrollment, you had COVID. We had an enrollment drop. We had ESER funds. Now, a lot of the ESER positions, we felt they really provided a service for our students, so we chose to keep some of those. Now we'll have to revisit some of those decisions, or find a way to do it differently, or, you know, it's just, that's a piece of it. You had staff that, you know, we have had to provide raises with no additional increase in revenue for the last six years. And then this year, you had House Bill III, and that, none of that was really new money. It was all, it was a quasi-grant, is what I call it. I mean, you kind of get it, and then you have to spend it on the salary piece, or you have to spend it over here. They gave some flexibility on some areas. We have not get that full amount due to our hold harmless hiccup, if you will. So once that gets resolved, and hopefully it's resolved in a manner that puts us on equal par with all the other districts, all the other 1020, 1015 districts that have tax rates, other 1025, that would, that will help put us on even, on even par to be able to compete. So there's this, for us, and for the nine other districts in our, in our group that this happened to, we are, we're kind of, we're in that proverbial rock in a hard place.
Yeah.
We're having to make a lot more assumptions than other districts are having to have, and we're having to make a lot more forecasts than other districts. And we're not able to do some of the things that our neighboring districts are able to do, because they, they're not in this, they're not waiting on the commissioner, or waiting on a ruling, or, they don't have to wait till February for that. They got the funds from the beginning of the school year when the bill passed. So at least, you know, they got them, they know they're going to get them. We don't know if we're going to get them. So, yeah, we are, you know, our hands are kind of tied a little bit. But just back to your question is, you know, is 190 the goal, is 180 the goal, is 160 the goal? What is the goal? And that's a conversation I think we can have at a, at a later time that needs to occur, but I just, I appreciate the question, because it is, we're thinking, thinking long-term ahead. All right. This is real quick, since I took a little time on the last slide, we'll speed through this one. If you mentioned, so the red on this graph is basically, it's about $40 million a month, and that's what the district spends on average, between payroll and supplies, et cetera. It's about $40 million a month. The blue line is our revenue. We don't get a lot of taxes in July, August, September, or September, October, I get my couple of state payments, which almost gets me to revenue equal expenditures. And then in November, I don't get anything from the state, or don't get FSP funding. And then December and January, our revenues shoot up, because our taxes come in, and then revenues go back down below our expenses. So again, 10 of the 12 months, we're running out of monthly as a deficit. We just have a really good, you know, December and January. But you got to have the cash flow to get you from July until December, and that's what the fund balance is for. Otherwise, you know, you don't want to make payroll and not have money in the bank. So, so this kind of puts in graph form, when I say 10 out of 12 months, that's what that means. We just get a lot of our, the vast majority of our money in December and January. So, again, back to the fund balance. So, you know, school first rating will be a little bit, we'll get dinged on that. If TEA says, hey, you're out of compliance, and then there was formal notifications, typically to the superintendent, and the, usually the president of the board. And then if it's confirmed, then the corrective action plan. And then our potential for our bond ratings to be downgraded as well. So, budget pieces in play. So we have a lot of pieces to our budget, as you can imagine. And this, this next slide is not include, inclusive of all pieces of the budget, but we have some, some pieces. So we have student enrollment projections. We have pay increase, the TASB study. You have revenue and efficiency strategies. That's probably, if I could do this slide over again, this would be the biggest piece. But they're all important. New sped formulas. I went to a workshop yesterday and today, and one of the deputy commissioners, or whatever her title was, I cannot remember what her exact title, but it's sped at TEA. I don't think they know exactly what, how they're going to do that yet. So I was hoping to get a little bit of an inside scoop, but as of right now, it's just basically what the statute says, is they're going to do tiers. And that's kind of, and I don't know, I hope she meant T-I-E-R-S and not T-E-A-R-S, but that was kind of what I, that was kind of what I was feeling when she was giving us that. So, in those assumptions on those earlier slides, we do have a $1 million built into that assumption of revenue growth with the new sped formulas, but we do hope that is a very conservative estimate. Yeah, the hold harmless 65 plus, the compression, education savings accounts or vouchers, those we'll hit on starting in 26, 27. Expect those to ramp up 26, 27, 27, 28, 28, 29. So we'll have to address for those. We see the Shar's funding, the federal funding allocations. Last I've heard is they're looking at a potential 15% decrease in Title I, going, starting in 26, 27. So we'll have to watch that one, in a, in a fund that we're already, you know, maxed out. Again, the new sped over, funding formula overhaul. I've heard great things, and I've also heard not great things. I've heard that you may get some over here, but then they're going to reduce, like mainstream, and then you're going to get dinged on that side, and you, you know, so I just, I don't, I hope that's not the case, but at this stage of the game, we built in 1 million, and that was it. We felt that was very conservative. Early projections of property value, you know, a couple of years ago, you know, in 2000, when House Bill III, in 2019, prior to that, we used prior value, prior year value. I mean, all this stuff right now, we're waiting on the commissioner and the hold harmless, that was, that was a non-factor, because my number was already, was last year's number, I plugged it in, and what, now I have to wait until current year, which isn't even finalized until January 31st, of the current year that I'm budgeting in. So halfway, my year's halfway over, seven months of my 12 months are over, I'm just now getting my final number to have my budget on, and how it all plays into the state formulas. Well, you know, you know, Paul said earlier, that someone said a magician, he said, no, you're Merlin. You know, I mean, how do you, all these different scenarios and estimates that we have to do, it's, it's a lot more stressful than it was back before 2019, 20. So ideally, you know, a bunch of puzzles, like a puzzle, we have a bunch of pieces, and it's how do we put these all in the right place? And so how do we get to that finished product? And, you know, or the other way we say it is, we're building an airplane while we're in the air, you know? In this stage of the game, I would say we're building an airplane while we're on this long runway. We haven't even got up in the air yet, and we're still trying to build this thing. So we'll, each time we meet, we'll have better information. We'll have more up-to-date information, but it, we will be all over the place as we go through this process. But we're excited, if you will, I mean, we're forced, but we're, you know, we're taking a positive attitude that we're going to be able to look at things through a completely different lens, while still maintaining, you know, keeping the main thing, the main thing, and that's our student experience. And how do we set up our system in a very different manner that's more efficient, but still does not take away from our staff or from our, our students? And where do we find that sweet spot? And, you know, it'll be challenging, but we're up for it. So, you know, again, the ultimate goal is we want to, we want a budget for success. You know, we believe the budget is, is not a separate piece. It's tied to every decision that we make. It's tied to our ultimate goal of student success and our student experience, and how do we incorporate a budget that supports that. So, you know, again, we always, I always say we want to be student-centered, data-informed, and so we have, we have done three reviews. We're still waiting on one. There's actually a fourth that we did, but it's PEMS, but I mean, it's just kind of on the process of how that's done. But, so we have Gibson Consulting, as you recall, last month, reported on their academic program management, the internal audit report. We, Stetson and Associates did a review of the staffing practices for students with disabilities. And then Mo Casey did a secondary staffing schedule, staffing study. So these three reports make up about half of the report that we're in our final phase of preparing for the board, patterned after a report that was done for another district around here, and then we added these three pieces into it. I expect to wrap that up this week, and then have it go through chiefs and cabinet to be able, or chiefs to be able to look at it, find all my errors, find all the things that, word it differently, and things that I missed or forgot, and then we'll, we'll wrap that and get that to the board in the next one to two weeks. So if you look at our staff to student rate, this is an interesting graph, and just understand that we're comparing two different things on this. So the red is changes in staff. So you're looking at your staff as a base. And so from 2018 to 2019, our staff went up a little bit, our enrollment went up a little bit more. We did the same thing from 19 to 20. 20, 21, that was a, I don't even really put much stock in 20 to 21 with COVID, so just skip on down a couple more years. Then we went 22, 23. That's, again, that's kind of about the time we had, we had our estimates, we built our budgets on the moderate, and then 24, 25, we went to low growth, or low estimate. So our, but our enrollment was actually lower both of those years, but we did staff a little bit higher. We had some ESER positions that we decided to keep. We have some other things. So we're in that process now where we have to kind of like, just kind of recalibrate, you know, I mean. And so if you look at that, and if you continue to have, you know, the red line, your staff keep going up, and your student enrollment going down, you tend to, you know, eat at your fund balance a little bit, or eat from other programs. So we have to make sure that we kind of start to bend those two lines back together. And again, just remember that those two lines do not have the same base as those percent. So a, you know, a 5% increase in student may be very, maybe equal to a 10% increase in staff, because staff is smaller. You have a smaller base, and the students, you have 42,000. Staff, you have 6,000. So just, don't look at that, and it looks gigantic at times, but it may not, it may just because you're comparing two different base numbers.
I'm still curious about the, that slide. I'd like to dig into that later. Not now, but this later, I'd like to know more about, Gloria's like, yes, not now, the staff overall, like, we're talking about pulling that closer. What does that mean, or what does that look like? And really, what does that end up saving, right? If you pull down by X percentage, what, and, and is that really the same, right? We're talking about staff. That means, you know, we're talking about different positions equal different results. So I, I want to dig into that more. I think this just gave us a highlight, and I think that's important for us to address. I remember when I got on the board in 2015, and the statement was made, they were worried about, and I remember going, wait, what's going on here? The question was, is there a situation where the system has kind of an imbalance, and it was going to cause an issue to fund balance? And that was 2015. And so we've gone through a lot since then. If, back then, the board was asking those questions, I feel like even now, I'm like, okay, I really want to dig into this and know more.
And let me just clarify, that 25 is 24, 25. So remember, this does not reflect the changes we made last spring for the 25, 26 current budget. So that was already starting to, that red line's already coming down, because we did make some changes in the spring.
I think, just to kind of piggyback off what you said, remember, we saw that PASA report when they came in August, right? For whatever reason, in 2016, we were still staffing as a high-enrolled district, but we saw the attend, attendance, the student enrollment drip then. And so I think since then, right, it wasn't until last year we did this reduced enrollment. So, I mean, that could play some into this, but for me, and not now, but later, once we start having those in-depth discussions, I'd like to see this by elementary, by each elementary, by each junior, junior high, each middle school and each high school, because we know not all of these campuses in our district are staffed, they're staffed at a certain across-the-board guideline, but we know we have elementaries with 870 kids, and we know we have elementaries with 300 kids, but we're still staffing them like we would an 800 elementary school. And so I am very curious, when we get to that conversation, when we do have a more efficient staffing model that doesn't impact student experience, what that looks like, and if we do see it closed?
No, we anticipate bringing that data as well, as we have those conversations. And the ultimate goal would be to see those close.
Board members, any other questions for Pete? All right. Thank you so much, Pete. We appreciate it. I know you're going to be up here a lot. You and Jeremy are going to be best friends over the next six months.
We already are.
I know. I appreciate it. All right, board members. We are now going to go to 783 Business and Finance Monthly Reports.
Hi, good member, good evening, Madam President, Members of Board Trustees, Dr. Gearing. Tonight, we have our, our monthly reports. I don't have anything specific or anything specifically to point out on the monthly reports out of the ordinary. I'm more than happy to answer any questions if you, if you have any, but they are pretty much the standard reports as of the month of August, so.
I think our board members are great. And if you have questions later, board members, I encourage you to get with Pete. He's a friendly guy, and will ask and answer all the questions for you. Okay, board members, all right. Well, next, I just muted myself. It is 9:03 PM, and the board will now go into closed session for the purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation or attorney-client privileged matter. Texas Government Code 551074, personnel deliberation regarding resignations, terminations, employment, reassignment-
employment, reassignment, duties and evaluation of personal public officers. Texas Government Code 5510821, deliberation regarding matters whereby personnel identify information regarding one or more students will be disclosed. Texas Government Code 551074, deliberation and consideration of the employment of early college high school principal. No action will be taken in closed session. Any action related to closed session agenda items will be taken during open session.